Good evening, everyone. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Board, Township Board of Education was provided on June 6, 2024, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. We will call to order for this meeting on June 10, 2024.
Mr. Davis? Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
And Mr. Merini.
Thank you. I motion to move into executive session.
So move.
Second.
Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough in the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows. One, the matters to be discussed are a student disciplinary matter and a personnel matter. Two, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. And we will aim to be back here at 7:30. Thank you.
Hello and welcome back to the Monday, June 10, 2024 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. We are now back from executive session. Mr. Eckert, if we can please take role.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
And Mr. Merini.
Here, we have a forum. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America, to the republic of the British Empire, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal and just.
I'd like to acknowledge the correspondence as listed. And we will move on to the Board President's report. And before I get to the meat of what I was going to speak about, I would like to read a resolution. Honoring Student Representative Rio Kuchlian for service on the Hillsborough Board of Education. Whereas Rio Kuchlian has served with distinction on the Hillsborough Board of Education, and whereas through their leadership, the Hillsborough Board of Education has gained fresh insights into students' concerns, student priorities, and what is on the mind of young people in the community; and whereas they have further contributed to the community by serving as a valuable spokesperson, sharing the student perspective at board meetings; and whereas Rio Kuchlian's exemplary commitment to fellow students and the school district has promoted clear communication between the Board, District Administration, and the student body; and whereas Rio Kuplian has maintained a professional decorum at board meetings, shown respect to board members, and strive to learn the proper etiquette of serving on a school board; and whereas they have demonstrated a commitment to advancing the education of all students without neglecting their own responsibility to strive for success in the classroom, now therefore be it resolved that the Hillsborough Board of Education recognizes Rio's dedication and commitment to advancing educational opportunity and open communication between the Board, District Administration, and the student body; and be it further resolved that members of the Hillsborough Board of Education extend their sincere appreciation to Rio for their dedicated service on the Hillsborough Board of Education; and be it further resolved that the members of the Hillsborough Board of Education extend their best wishes to Rio in all of their future endeavors. Do you want to make any comments?
Yeah, thank you so much. It's been a great honor serving as this role. I not only just gained so many experiences being in this role, but I also was able to see how a Board of Education operates. And I've made countless, I've learned countless things and made countless memories just being part of here, from all the motions that were passed, to everything that happened. I'm truly grateful for this role and I'll make sure to use everything I've learned for the rest of my life. Thank you again.
All right, so before we move on to the recognition of retirees in the superintendent's report, I just want to make some comments as we move forward in today's meeting. For those who are unaware, it is our charge to review and potentially approve an updated budget for the district. You know, Board of Education members rarely agree unanimously on anything, but I think this Board is not happy with the situation it was put in. I think that's clearly obvious if you speak to the Board members, that the situation we were put in, where we had to decide whether or not to increase the tax levy on the community without a vote of the public, is something that we did not want to do. But in our role as Board members, it's something that we have to take into account and make a decision on. And hopefully, if we pass this updated budget today, it shows our commitment to ensuring the long-term financial stability of the district, allows us to offer more programs or lower costs in certain instances to members of the community. I know there are certain items that are up for debate on whether they should or should not be included in the spend of that money. The final decisions around that will be made at future board meetings when we approve spend for those items. I know there was some feedback that we should spend all of that money and restore all 51 positions that were lost in 2019. And while that does sound like a noble task, you know, if the state comes back and says, "We're cutting in $2 million again next year", that's 20 teaching positions that we could lose. So Superintendent Volpe will be presenting a budget that is balanced and that allows us to have some wiggle room between additional staff, you know, completing everything that was approved in the most recent referendum, not allowing any cuts to staff that we could have had to do with this year's budget as it was, but also gives us some areas, you know, around courtesy busing and the kindergarten, full-day kindergarten program that if we do run into a crunch, we can make cuts without having to cut staff again. So no answer is perfect. And I know Board members are going to give their feelings as we go to Board comment, but hopefully, the community will be happy that we've done things that will improve the district, potentially help support property values. Obviously, school districts are a big part of that. So there should be benefit to the entire community here with the updated budget that we'll put forward. So I'm not going to dwell too long. We will have comments from the Board as we review the superintendent's presentation as it pertains to the budget. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we get to the end of the school year, it's always very bittersweet. While many of us are looking forward to summer vacation in the anticipation of what's next in a new coming year, as we think about hiring new staff or new students coming into schools, we lose some of our brightest and best. And today, we are here to recognize some of those retirees that I will speak about very briefly, but there will also be a little narrative about them up on the Board. And President Merini is going to, along with your principals, be up there to congratulate you as well as give you a little token of our appreciation. So principals, I would ask all of you to join President Merini up there so that when your staff members come up, that you are ready to receive them. Obviously, in addition to the token of our appreciation, there are some nice words that you can say in handshakes and obviously be very appreciative. I would like everybody's attention for the final slide of this as to how much incredible experience we are going to have walking out the door. There are several people who are retiring who are not here, so they will come up on screen momentarily. But everybody who is here, come up and you will be a chance to meet the Board President, be acknowledged by your principal. And most importantly, thank you for everything that you have done for students over a long period of time. You're not here to take care of me, to take care of your principals or the Board members. You're here to take care of kids, and that's what you did for an extended period of time. So thank you so much for that. So we just want to welcome everybody here for the retirees, for their dedication and commitment, as I had mentioned. And we will start with Hillsborough High School. As you can see, there's a whole slew of people this year who are retiring from Hillsborough High School, but some of them right now are here in the audience. And the first person that I want to call up to be congratulated is Christina Costa, one of our school counselors. Christina's been a school counselor at Hillsborough High School for 22 years and is an educator for 33 years. Thank you so much for your service. Please, can you stay up there? Can you stay? Could you stay up to all the retirees so you can get a nice picture and everything? That'd be great. We also have Mary DeSantis from Hillsborough High School. And Ms. DeSantis is not just a longtime employee, but a longtime resident of Hillsborough who, like me, also had her children attend our schools. Thank you so much. Taryn Formato. If you're reading the slides behind me, we want to thank her for 42 impressive years at Hillsborough High School. Robin Kimmelman. Sorry, Robin? Is Robin here? No? And that's our high school. Give our high school one more round. At Hillsborough Middle School, we had two retirees this year. And is Bronik here?
Yes.
Oh, Bronik! I'm sorry, Bronik. I didn't see you back there. And for those of you who don't know, it's going to be a very tough retirement for us. Bronik, for a long period of time, has held two positions and worked, I don't know, 16-hour days for a long period of time, both as the courier for the district and also as a custodian at the middle school. Thank you so much, Bronik. At Autton Road Intermediate School, we have some retirees as well, as you can see them listed behind me. And the first retiree we would like to recognize is Marla Bruce. Marla has been an advocate for students for a long period of time and has helped her with social, helped them with social and emotional challenges and is really to be thanked for her work with students. From Amsterdam Elementary School, we have three retirees for this year. And today with us, we have Lois Moak. This year, as a teacher of grade four, it's going to leave a great hole as she has spent 29 years shaping the minds of learners in elementary schools. Thank you so much, Lois. At Hillsborough Elementary School, is Kirsten here? Yeah. And Kirsten Goodwin. I turned 50, I need glasses. Kirsten, for 36 years, she has been an inspiration to the students all across the district. In addition to her being a great employee, I actually had the pleasure of working with her for many years. And I've seen her around town a couple of times. I won't say where because I don't want to do that, but it was out. It's out at a nice establishment, you know, having food and drink and that kind of stuff. But Kirsten, we really want to have you enjoy your retirement. Thank you so much. Now, I know Dr. Jenkins couldn't be here tonight, but we did want to make sure that we recognize all of our retirees at Sunny Meet. And I think we have multiple who are here this evening. And I believe Mr. Rogan is going to congratulate them on behalf of Dr. Jenkins. And we first would like to congratulate Robin DeVincenzo. As noted by Dr. Jenkins, Robin is one of a kind and has spent 38 years at what she considers to be her purpose and passion. Also from Sunny Meet, Dawn Rens. Second-grade teacher who has all the qualities of compassionate, dedicated, and student-centered educator. Thank you for your service at Sunny Meet. At Wood Fern Elementary School, there were two retirees this year. Oh, there's somebody. Is it Kirsten? I'm sorry, I didn't have you. Kirsten, please come on up. Kirsten, teacher of grade three. I'm sorry we didn't have your slide up there, but we will make sure we get it up and put it on the website. And we want to thank you for your service, too. And I apologize for that. Do we have anybody else here from Sunny Meet tonight? I will make sure that we have you up on the website tomorrow. And from Wood Fern, I believe we have one person here. Marion Donahue. Marion has been an educator for 28 years in Hillsborough for 24 and 14 at Wood Fern. And I'm sorry, we ought to really just double-check this in the future, make sure. I believe we missed a couple of people from Autton Road. And I apologize for that. Can we go back and honor Karen Matthews? Karen is, Karen is obviously the life of the park and probably was like that her entire time at Autton Road School. Karen, we will make sure that we have that up there for you. And again, my apologies, too. Do we also have Marie McLaughlin here as well? Marie has been one of our luncheats and we could not do what we do on a daily basis without not only our certificated staff members in the classrooms, but who's looking out for our kids in those unstructured times that's sometimes the toughest parts of the day. So thank you, Marie, so much. Again, if there's anybody else, please just let me know. At Woods Road Elementary School, we do have three retirees. And we'll go back to it. Jean McRite Roth is here. Jean's compassion for kids has shown for 22 years in Hillsborough, and we thank you for your dedication to the students. So in all of our retirees, and this doesn't even include a couple of people that I missed, and I promise you will be up on the website by tomorrow, we are losing 707 years of kindness, caring, dedication to the students of Hillsborough Township Public Schools. And I would submit, as I've said several times, that all of you standing there, I don't care what your job position is, teacher, custodian, luncheater, you're an educator and you made a difference for students. So thank you for that. And often, I got to quote Mr. Rogers, I was an elementary school principal. When you think you're at the end of something, you're usually at the beginning of something else. And I wish you nothing but the best of success. Again, thank you for your dedication to the Hillsborough Township Public Schools. Mr. President, do you want to take a?
Yeah, five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess.
This is like an example of we have this money here from plan. The only difference is if like if we say, and we have money in March for this building, we can't use that for that. We'd have to go back to the town. It's too many. We're supposed to change it. But we could fix the roof. We could fix the basketball hoop. We could fix this.
Capital expenses.
They don't understand this. If you hire, they can change the game. They can't do it now. They don't have the power to change it. What could he done do? I would hire him, hire him, hire him to switch places. And I said, Gene, we're getting high school. I missed the point. I said, if we do like, if we do like this one, do you want to hire three new teachers? We know you had an almost 15 million dollar high school, maybe 150, 153. That's not going to get visibility, but we could give it and we could get a bunch of them through. And then you get a third teacher. And that makes you a lot of good money. Like, don't do it this, and then another referendum for this, another referendum for this, and another one. Like, people are eventually going to say, dude, maybe more, in next round, I told the next round, you should be at the school, that's it. If we do another one in Kansas, people are going to do it again. They're going to say, fuck you, man, you're doing this.
Absolutely. So are you seeing that you're graduating? Congratulations.
Thank you. We're going to have some running activities. You have tickets, and if anything is work, we're going to save you. We're going to be able to get what you think you're going to do. That's, that's what's up, right? I don't care. I know, like, like you, you live for you.
They don't look like survivors.
I know those people. I don't go out to dinner with this. I have these, like, I have this, and I have this, and we're paying this. Order my. I mean, like, if I have two kids, we're really, three kids, I'm not like, you pay three kids, and I pay two. It comes down to one. If I do a few times, then it's not going to be different. We only were the last two kids. We went to dinner, but I mean, I forgot. I've never once said this. I like your kid. We have broken, we grew up with the whole house. There's another family too. We don't ever split. So. We're going to be here all night. I think now I'm going to announce it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hello. I'd like to thank everyone again. Thank all the retirees. We are going to attempt to move forward with the meeting. So if you could make your way to the exits or join us in the audience, either is fine. We'd like audience, so that's preferred. Don't make me put on my judge's gown.
You have to do the elementary school clap. No, it has to go like this. Done, 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 done.
I'm not an elementary school teacher.
See? See? They know.
Five, four, three. I did not think that was going to work. All right. Let me know when we're live again. All right. We are back. Thank you for accommodating that break to celebrate the retirees. Every second worth it. All right. So we will continue with the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate again the retirees. It is, it was a pleasure working with you. You still have a few more days, so please keep coming to work for the next week. Part of my responsibility, as President Marini had said, is to present, along with Mr. Eckert, the 2425 revised tentative budget presentation. So Mr. Eckert's going to speak to a couple of things, and I'm going to speak to some larger things, and then eventually the board is going to be speaking about some things as well. So, Mr. Eckert, I will kick it over to you to start.
Actually, I think you're first.
No, I'm, okay, I'll go first. So why are we revisiting our budget? As I've been reporting out, and you may have seen me either in The Patch, or on Tap Hillsborough, or on Spotlight News, New Jersey, or on New Jersey News 12, or across social media, I've been advocating for a long period of time that there is unfair funding in the state and that schools, districts like Hillsborough needed options. There are 140 school districts who were in the situation that we were in, and the state legislation in the Assembly, in the Senate, and then signed by the governor last month, gave local boards of education options. And we are here tonight to discuss one of those options, or some of those options. So the timeline has been extended. Normally budgets are done by this point, all the way through July 19th. We have to have our public hearing no later than then, and we currently have that scheduled for July 15th. Tonight is the presentation of the tentative revised budget. And also, as part of that, we're receiving 45% of the state aid cut, which is $1.2 million, will be awarded to us as stabilized aid. This is a one-time award, as opposed to regular state aid. So if this is used as for recurring costs, we would need to cut that amount next year. So boards of education now have the opportunity to exceed the 2% tax levy cap to recoup the amount of state aid lost between fiscal year 2021 and 2025. Those are the years of S2, where we had lost money. And that would become part of our permanent tax levy base, giving us some financial stability. So I'm about to go into this into detail to the Board of Education as to why this is an option for consideration and what we could potentially do with those funds. Now, Mr. Eckert, I think I'm kicking it over your way for.
Thank you, Mr. Volpe. Here's an overview of the proposed revised tentative 2024-25 budget. The general fund budget is $148,367,502. The grants and entitlements budget is $1,906,885, and the debt service budget is $2,187,950. Our general fund is increasing by just over $9.8 million. The reason for this is the 2% tax levy increase, which is the normal tax levy increase allowable each year, a $777,000 waiver for health benefit costs, $5.7 million for the restoration of some of the state aid cuts, which is through the tax levy, and a one-time $1.2 million state aid restoration grant. There's also a $3.25 million budgeted from our capital reserve account to be used for one-time projects, and the $500,000 budget withdrawal from a maintenance reserve account, which is to use to offset the costs of maintenance throughout the district. The grants and entitlements portion of the budget is comprised of federal, state, and local grants and donations, which is increasing by $43,000. And the final portion of the budget is the debt service, which is the principal interest payments for the bonds that were issued for the 2019 referendum. The grants and entitlements and debt service amounts have not changed since the April budget hearing. Mr. Volpe, I'll turn it back to you.
So presented for the board's consideration, and also for the public, why does the board need to consider going beyond the 2% cap to make up for cumulative state aid losses? Again, this is some things that I have testified, along with other members, including Mr. Goodhue, to both the Senate and the Assembly. I've been on the news, I've been on TV, I've been in social media. So a lot of these reasons are already known, and I've made it very public where I stand on this. But even in our most recent survey, there were still some additional questions that went out there from the public, so I wanted to make that sure. So why do we need to consider this? I have brought up this slide before about our financial shackles and what can we actually do. But the one thing that I added here is in yellow behind me, because in some of the survey results, people were like, what about all of this money that you're getting from all the new construction in town? That is a false statement. There is new construction in town. The Board of Education does not get one dime more. A hard 2% cap is a hard 2% cap. The only way we could get more from more construction in town would be to exceed that 2% cap. What more construction does in town with a 2% cap is it more evenly distributes that tax burden across the people who have moved in town. So if you think that the Board of Education is getting more money because of more construction in town, we are not. Additionally, with all the other financial shackles on me that I have presented at other budget presentations, that's one of the reasons why it needs to be considered. One thing that I got a couple emails about was that I just need to budget better. I'm a superintendent, and I need to budget better to be able to prepare for this. So I want to remind people as to what we were told by all indications. We were getting a $253,000 cut in state aid. I told Mr. Eckert, I said, budget for a $400,000 cut. Budget for a cut 60% higher than we are anticipating. I think that's pretty conservatively aggressive budgeting, upping it by 60%. In the end, we got a cut 1,000% larger than we thought we were going to get by all indications. And I don't know any household or any organization that can somehow budget and prepare for a 1,000% cut. It's not something that is sustainable. So I do feel that we budgeted responsibly coming into this budget season. So a couple of options that we have. I did mention that we are going to apply for and pretty much automatically receive $1.2 million from a stabilization aid grant. The word grant implies that it's a one-year use of money. It does not go back into our state aid baseline. It is not something that we would have again next year. What I made a commitment to in my budgets was a commitment to staff and staffing. So what will I do with this $1.2 million for one year if we get it? If the board takes no further action, I will make sure that we fill all of the build borough back positions that were approved by the taxpayers in November, and I will save one person's job who would have to be cut. That'll be $1.1 million in referendum positions and about $100,000 with salaries and benefits for that person. No one would end up losing their job, and we would be able to follow through on what we said to the taxpayers. But let me make it clear, that utilizes the full $1.2 million. That's it. It's gone. And it's a one-year use of money. So if the board chooses not to go past the 2% cap, we'll be in the position, a couple months earlier next year, of needing to cut this $1.2 million. And as superintendent, please tell me, how do I recruit and retain staff for these positions if it's known that I'm going to cut these positions in a year? Very difficult. If the board decides to go beyond the 2% cap, then we can use this one-time funding for capital projects or other things that wouldn't have to cost the recurring cost year over year. So that's what we will do if we stay at the 2% cap. That means, what is still cut? I got that $1.2 million back. I promised I would take care of staff, because they're the ones who make the most integral changes and the most pivotal people in front of our children. That means other things still have to go. So, you saw we had some retirees. There's $625,000 in positions from the people who were standing here and some who weren't here that just aren't going to be filled. So some people aren't losing their jobs, but some people who walked out the door aren't going to have their jobs refilled. $87,000 will come from extra services that staff members provide, such as summer work and before-school library hours at the high school. Like, we are ready to go on day one. Kids have their devices, you know, we dot i's, we cross t's. Some schools start handing out their devices when school starts. It takes a week. That's not who we are in Hillsborough. That's who we may have to be. $160,000 in new instructional supplies and materials that were originally budgeted and could not be reallocated to grants. I was very happy that Dr. Feltry found about $100,000 that could be reallocated to, $500,000, right, to grants, but not everything could. I want to give my teachers materials, updated materials. Those are not in the budget as of right now. $18,000 from some small projects, and $141,000 will still come from the elimination of middle school sports in certain Hillsborough High School and Hillsborough Middle School Clubs. So that's what I have if we don't go beyond the 2% cap, and it's a reason why that we have to consider it. I've lived in Hillsborough since 1999. Less than some of you, probably more than some of you as well. And I need you to think about, you know, your property taxes. Nobody likes property taxes going up, but how do you feel about your property values? And when it comes down to your property values, the biggest thing about property values is the health of your school system. It's the truth, unless you're right on the beach. That usually helps too. And we have to look at who are we competing against when it comes to our property values? We're not competing against Mahwah in the north. We're not competing against Cape May in the south. If someone wants to move in this area, who are we competing against? We are competing against other towns in Somerset County. So it's very important for us to look at how are we doing compared to Somerset County. You've seen this chart from me before, except instead of putting it in alphabetical order, I put it in descending numerical order of state aid received by Somerset County Boards of Education since 2020-21, with North Plainfield at the top, receiving an extra $41 million. Bound Brook beneath that, and you can count down there and see the numbers. Two school districts we normally are compared to, Bridgewater, right up the road, getting 4.6 million extra. Montgomery, right down the road, another 4 million extra. And Hillsborough, losing $7 million. Whose school districts are improving? Whose areas are more desirable to move into? When your areas are more desirable to move into, what happens to property values? Keep that in mind. In my survey too, one of the things that came out that frequently does when it comes down to budget crunch time is cut administration. You've got too much administration. I put this out over social media, and I've also been on TV speaking about this as well. Hillsborough, the title right there, spends the least in the county per pupil for administrator salary and benefits, overall administrative costs, and has the worst student-to-administrator ratio. When it comes to administrator salary and benefits, we are hundreds of dollars per pupil behind Manville, who's also close to the bottom. When it comes to overall costs, it's the same. We are last again. And it's almost embarrassing, our ratio, when you compare us to other like schools, like if we had mentioned, you know, Bridgewater or Montgomery, right down the road. Montgomery has 127 kids for every administrator. We have 223. Bridgewater, if you look at them, I'm missing them on the slide right here, two above. Even though they're close to the bottom, 184 per administrator, we have 223. Have you ever wondered why an administrator hasn't gotten back to you? Hasn't been in the hallway when something has happened? Why curriculum's not being updated? It's because they're stretched as thin as they possibly can be. If you doubt any of the facts that I am spewing to you, there's a fact-check link at the bottom. You can check it out all for yourself. When it comes to instructional supplies and materials that I'm able to give my teachers, we again, aren't close to the bottom. We are at the bottom. We only spend $127 per pupil for instructional materials every year. This nurse, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know you teach in Bridgewater. And if you look at Bridgewater's, the number's there, Bridgewater spends $447 on instructional supplies per student. It's almost a different quality of education. I said, one of the reasons why I came back here is because I believe we have the best staff and the best teachers and the best custodians. I did my journey. I left Hillsborough. I went to Princeton. I went to Moorestown. We are where we are, outperforming where we should be because of the people that we have here. And it's time that I gave them something in order to do the work better. When it comes to staff member salaries and benefits, we are fifth from the bottom in the county. So we're not over there high, overpaying everybody, and we're only ahead of two typical school districts. The other two districts, the schools that we're ahead of are charter schools. So we are fifth from the bottom when it comes to taking care of our teachers with their salaries and benefits. Again, this is all fact-checkable. So overall, when you look at the per pupil costs in the county, take a look at that list, start at the top, the per pupil costs, and eventually you find us. The only school district we spend more on than per pupil is Bound Brook and the two charter schools in town. Where do we perform? We perform up at the top of the county in a lot of areas. We don't perform down at the bottom. Imagine what we could do if we were properly funded. Imagine. So the takeaway that I want you to have from that is that in Somerset County, Somerset County, we're the only school district who has seen state aid cuts for years. We're the only ones. The only ones. And we are consistently at the bottom of the county in budgeting and spending. Consistently. Those are all verifiable facts that anybody who doubts it can go online and check. It's not an opinion. This year also, the board engaged in the strategic planning process. The Board of Education, for a variety of reasons, which I don't need to go into, was a little bit rudderless, I would say. A strategic plan is your rudder that keeps you focused and moving in the right direction. And I was so proud of the work that this board did with divergent opinions and coming up with strategic plan objectives. And my administrative team are going to start working on that and hopefully implement that in the following year. Focusing on student success, culture for learning, and facilities and resource management. And as we engage in the strategic planning process, we had focus groups with hundreds of community members. We sent out a survey that 1,900 community members responded. We asked them a whole variety of questions, including, hey, if some of this stuff is going to cost you more, are you willing to pay for it? And we got results where people had said, yeah, if some of this is going to cost more money, we'd be willing to pay for it. So when the legislation changed last month, our governance committee asked me, hey, Mike, I know, I know we already kind of surveyed people through strategic planning, but can we ask again? Because this is a heavy lift that we're asking, and I know that, but it's for Hillsborough. So we asked the questions again. We got more people who responded. We had 2,500 people who had responded. And I really want to thank the township committee for helping me get this survey out. Again, it was also put out on social media in a variety of different ways. 83% of the respondents said they want something more out of this budget. And there were 17% said, don't add anything to the tax levy, keep it as it is. But 83% of 2,500 respondents wanted something more. And they wanted it in the areas that not only came up during strategic planning, but that the governance committee also asked me about. So we've kind of done our due diligence there in checking the pulse of the community too. And tough thing about it is, we've been thrown a lifeline. And as President Marini said, it's not the one we want, but it's the one we have. What do I think should happen? I think the state should give us our money. Should give it back to us. That's not happening. That's how it should happen. And if I'm in the picture behind me, and I'm drowning, and somebody is throwing me a life preserver, I'm not going to say, I don't like the orange one. Can you go back and throw me a blue life preserver? Because I prefer that it should happen now. I'm grabbing onto that. I'm taking advantage of whatever is right there in order to do it. And some of you also know this about me, but many of you probably don't. It's in my nature. I'm a wrestler. I grew up being a wrestler. I had a good amount of success in wrestling. I also became a high school wrestling coach for a long period of time. Gosh, was that a rewarding experience, especially when I had state champion accolades and things like that. It's a lot of fun. But I also remember the tough times. And I can't tell you how many times one of my wrestlers, if you don't know the concept of wrestling, you try to pin the guy, put him on his back, and hit his shoulders down, and pin, the match is over. And there were plenty of times that my wrestlers got turned on their back, and I could clearly see that their shoulders weren't touching the mat for the pin, but the referee blew the whistle and slapped the mat. And my wrestlers would come off to me complaining, coach, my shoulders weren't down. I wasn't pinned. My answer to them was, were you on your back? Well, yeah, I was on my back. My answer back was, don't put yourself in a compromising position and then blame somebody else when they make a bad call. Get off your back, and then you won't get pinned. And that's where we are right now. We're on our back. And we can complain about the state, and we can complain about politicians, but I've heard from Republicans and from Democrats, both, saying, this isn't going to be solved anytime soon. We're going to wait for the next governor to come in, and then when the next governor comes in, maybe he gets it done in a year, and then all of a sudden, we're very much down the road. So I'm asking the board in Hillsborough, it's time to get off of our back. Let's not get pinned and blame other people for making a bad call. And it is a bad call. So the essential question that we have to ask is, what do we want to accomplish and how do we do that? What are we here to do? I know what you hired me to do. You hired me to run a school district to the best of my capabilities. And this is a tool that I have in front of me, and I'm recommending it. Like Mr. Marini said, even if I don't like it, I now have that tool in front of me. I now have that life preserver. I now am ready to get off of my back. So right now, what you're deciding is the 2425 budget. It's going to impact the 2526 budget, and then who knows what's going on in 2627. And I put these three years up here because it's, it's kind of interesting and coincidental. Not only will we be halfway into our strategic plan, and what do you want to accomplish, that's also the end of my contract. And I want to deliver something here in Hillsborough before the board, the community makes a decision about me, you know? Do I want to be here to just dismantle the district over a couple of years? You know, we'll cut this job this year. We'll raise this class size this year. We'll get rid of that, and we'll keep on chugging along, and hopefully my staff members stay, and hopefully new staff members want to come here and cross your fingers. We're a proud community. Do we want to build it back? So knowing that we can't fix everything from five years of state aid cuts in one year, after all of our committee meetings, discussions, and all the information that I've shared with the board, the TV shows I've been on, social media, all of that, presented for the board's consideration is a budget that does incorporate the 5.7 million into the tax levy. Whatever the board decides, we're going to end up acting accordingly. Now, the board's job is to decide on the number, on what they want to do. And administration's job is to, once that number is set, figure out, okay, what do we want to do with it? And I, in the spirit of transparency, want to show the board, as well as the community, that if the board goes to this level, what I'm going to do with it. Obviously, these things still have to come in front of the board for approval, but I don't want you just randomly given 5.7 million dollars. And oh, it's a bonus for the superintendent. There's new furniture coming and all. No, I want to show you exactly what my plan is to do with it. So what would this additional money be used for if we were to do it? Step one, permanently restore all cuts from the April public hearing. All of it. That's 11 staff positions from the Build Borough Back referendum that touch all of our schools. That's five staff positions from these retirees that weren't going to be refilled. So that's 16 certificated staff teaching positions. That's new instructional materials that I had to cut. And that's the restoration of all extracurriculars, including the middle school and high school clubs, as well as middle school sports. So everything that you heard me cut in April, everything is going to be put back in. What are other things we've lost over time, and what are some other needs that we weren't able to do because of S2 that we now have the opportunity to do? One thing that we've heard about is courtesy busing, how that was eliminated as a budgetary concern, and that has led to some safety issues for students and inconvenience for parents. I want to look at being able to put that back in. However, I do want to just let the community know, and I did highlight this behind me. This obviously wouldn't be ready for the start of the school year, because we have to start getting bus routes out now. So this is something that hopefully by the cold weather months, we would be able to bring up and in. I want to add two positions at our high school that are desperately needed. One is an additional building monitor. We have one over there now, and we have my supervisor, who needs to attend to the entire district. I don't think it's unreasonable to have in a school of 2,400 students, two people with their eyes on safety and security at all times. I want to restore an administrator that was cut at the high school, high school vice principal. Again, 2,400 students, four people in charge of discipline and being in charge of a grade level is not that. and being in charge of a grade level is not that extravagant. We want to get a district centralized registrar. We don't have anybody who's in charge specifically of registering students right now. So if you come in the summer, good luck. Because at our elementary schools, we don't have any 12-month staff. Hopefully you come in at a day when we happen to have a couple of hours for people. And since we don't have 12-month staff and then people come to register in late August, we try to get as many people as we can in. But that's one of the reasons why we can't get people on buses. Because you don't have people year-round to be doing that. And we also want to be looking at redistricting elementary schools this year. And we could even add some things like some communications to this because I know that's been a consideration of board members as well. We're also setting aside money for the construction for full-day kindergarten. Full-day kindergarten is something that I believe in, both educationally, but there's also pragmatic reasons behind this decision. We are one of nine school districts, nine, left in the state that do not have full-day kindergarten. There are hundreds, Jerry, you know how many districts are in the state?
542.
542. Okay, not all of them necessarily have kindergarten. But let's say that it's, you know, 100 of them don't have kindergarten because they're a different kind of operating district. We are one of nine that does not have it yet. It does hurt us a little bit in state aid. It hurts us with early intervention with kids. And we have to plan for it because I firmly believe that at some point, the state of New Jersey is going to mandate full-day kindergarten. And if you don't plan, you plan to fail. What would happen if the governor or somebody mandates this and we don't have construction going on and we haven't set resources aside? I'll tell you how I'll get full-day kindergarten in. Because there's only one way to do it. Raise all the other elementary class sizes to 30-32, like other school districts have had. You open up rooms and then you put teachers in there. That's not beneficial for kids, but it checks the box on a mandate. So let's plan before this happens in a couple of years. And then we have to do that. Since that's one-time spending for construction, because kindergarten, in case you don't know, we have to have like certain toilet seats for them. We can't have them climbing up to go to the bathrooms. We have to do all of these accommodations in the room. If that's one-time spending, then that money could be used to hire kindergarten staff. The board, in its consideration for what citizens may have to go through if taxes are raised, has very wisely, I believe, suspended pay-to-play policy for 24-25 and has also updated the policy potentially for 25-26. Pay-to-play is when you are paying about $100 per sport at the high school, $50 for clubs in order to do that. So if you have two kids who are in three sports, 600 bucks right there. We're suspending that policy because if we're asking the people to pay more, we want to be able to also give something back there. At the high school, we also need to have some construction that takes place for safer transitions for students between classes. We have dangerous bleachers that need repair. And we also have some rekeying security efforts in the district. You may remember reporting to the board several months ago that we were able to procure a grant to rekey our schools. And we're going to be looking at Walton Road School and Sunnymeat School to start that project. You know, so we have better security and more, one single locus of control for that. And we want to be able to do some of that. So the board tonight, I just want to make it very clear to the public, isn't voting on my ideas. But what I've heard from people when it comes to education is, you know, there's a lack of transparency. We don't know what you're going to do about X, Y, and Z. Well, you know what I'm going to do. Now, this would still require, in a lot of circumstances, for the board to pass votes on certain things. But there's no black hole for the money, you're not knowing where it's going. It's all laid out right here. This would be my plan of things to bring forward to the board. And I'm very proud to say that most of this has come from feedback from the community through the surveys, through conversations that I've had with staff members on the ground, through conversations with my administrative team, and through many conversations at both committee levels and correspondence with the board. As Mr. Marini said, getting everybody on board with everything is impossible. I could probably ask people here, what color's my tie? And get 17 different answers rather than just one. But what I think I've done is I've taken in the needs of the community, as well as the staff, as well as the students, and tried to funnel them in one area. And that's kind of what you want a superintendent to do. And I'll kick it back over to Mr. Eckert to briefly discuss the tax impact.
Thank you, Mr. Volpe. So here I will share with the tax, with, share the school tax impact on Hillsboro and Millstone residents as a result of the budget, which includes a 2% increase to our general fund of tax levy, the health benefits cap waiver, the 5.7 million in additional taxes, and the state aid cut restoration waiver of 1.2 million. As you can see here, even though this budget proposes to increase the tax levy by the maximum allowable, the 2024 tax rate for residents of both towns is actually decreasing when compared to the 2023 tax rate. The decrease is the, is the result of an increase in ratables for Hillsboro of 746 million and of 3.75 million for Millstone. For Hillsboro, the 2024 school tax rate will be 1.3833, which is a decrease of .0074 when compared to the 2023 school tax rate. For this year, the assessment for the average home in Hillsboro is $547,355. And a house assessed at this value will pay $7,572 in school taxes for 2024. For comparison's sake, in Montgomery, a home assessed at $507,000 will pay $11,863 in school taxes for 2024. This marks the sixth consecutive year where the school tax rate for Hillsboro has decreased. In Millstone, the 2024 school tax rate will be .8835, which is a decrease of .0207 when compared to the 2023 school tax rate. For this year, the assessment for the average Millstone home is $396,255. And that house will pay $3,501 in 2024 school taxes. This is the fifth consecutive year where the school tax rate for Millstone has decreased. Again, even though we are increasing the total dollar amount for the school tax levy, the actual school tax rate is decreasing. To determine the impact on your school taxes for 2024, you need to multiply your 2024 assessed value by the appropriate tax rate for either Hillsboro or Millstone and divide that by 100. So in the next slide, after the board approves a budget tonight, it will be submitted to the executive county superintendent. We will continue to accept public input and the board will continue discussions and committee meetings. Once the county approves a budget submission, the revised advertised budget will be generated and published in advance of the public hearing, which is scheduled to be held on July 15th. And Mr. Volpe, that concludes the presentation unless you have some...
Yeah, I want to, I want to thank everybody for their attention. And I know there's going to be further discussion. But I just want to, I want to go back to that one picture that I put up there. I really feel as if this board and school district has to grab that life preserver. That we have to, as I said, get off our back and take control of what we can take control of. I don't believe Superman is coming to fix Hillsboro. And as the mayor, who came to the senior awards the other night, said, the one thing he likes best about being mayor is telling it like it is. And that's what I'm coming out to, and I'm telling it like it is. The people who are going to help us are the people sitting right here, right now. And I appreciate you allowing me some time. And Mr. President, I'll kick it back to you.
All right, thank you very much. So this is Agenda Item 14-1 on the Action Agenda. But given that that'll be a little bit of time from now, I can open it up to the board if any board members want to make comments now or you can hold off for the discussion for the Action Agenda. I'll open it now as a courtesy if anybody wants to add any comments.
Well, I'll comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
Jumping the gun a little bit. As has been said, it's a troubling state of affairs. The ball has been badly missed. At the state level, funding has been cut significantly. It always puzzled me, if we look at the towns in Somerset County, why are other towns receiving funds and only Hillsboro's being cut? Montgomery and Bridgewater are considered to be affluent towns, they're well-run towns. And yet they're receiving more and more financially, what's going on here? And one of the slides that you brought up did give a brief comparison of Montgomery to Hillsboro. And we don't want to be governed by what people do up the road. But there's a significant difference in what's happening in Montgomery in terms of school taxes versus Hillsboro. And one of the explanations that I have heard as to why Hillsboro finds themselves in this hole is that we've been kind of undertaxing, now that's from the state's point of view, for many, many, many years. So it's as though there's this hole that someone thinks that we haven't been filling with our fair share. And so it's ketchup. What makes me uncomfortable in this situation, even if that's accurate or even if that's, you know, if the data supports that traditionally, questions that have to do with taxes and tax increases have always been resolved by referendum. And I know we've said, well, we've asked the community to provide input. There are surveys, there's social media and so on. But there's nothing like a referendum for definitively answering a question. But we are where we are right now. And I think it's pretty clear, you know, there's this one comparison of Montgomery-Bridgewater. There are similar comparisons to be made. And given the cuts that we're experiencing, some kind of increase in the tax levy really would seem to be not only unavoidable, but prudent. I still have some questions, Mr. Volpe, in your presentation here. My chief hesitation has to do with all-day kindergarten. And not that I oppose or I'm against all-day kindergarten as a matter of principle. But for a line item of that magnitude, it almost constitutes a change in program, a change in philosophy. And I again think that something of that magnitude should be addressed by referendum. So oddly enough, I would say I do favor the tax increase because of school supplies and education materials and school sports and go down the list. But as a line item, I still have hesitancy about approving such a big line item like the investment for all-day kindergarten, which is forever. There's no going back from there without the town having a chance to participate in that call in a more official way than a Facebook survey or something. So I'm just raising those concerns. I also am not comfortable, just as a board member, with the state legislature punting and in doing us with the authority to raise taxes without a referendum. I can see the prudence in doing that. I'm saying here, I think we have to do that. But again, it feels like an end run. It feels like a presto, chango. And I'm not comfortable with that.
I can address just a couple of things that you had said. Obviously, anything, you know, tonight you're really approving a number and we can have further conversations about what that is used for. You're not approving necessarily everything that I put up there because a lot of those numbers are just estimates too, and in a quick amount of time. But what I can assure you, Joel, and I think we know each other enough now that you at least, trust me, it might be a good word. The ball dropping of the state of showing up every spring and saying, oh, isn't this horrible, is not going to be dropped by me. I know that this isn't, this is a solution. This is not a good or the best solution. And my advocacy work is going to continue to try to make sure that fair funding for Hillsboro happens in the future. Because the real unknown here is that both Republicans and Democrats have told me, we're not going to have this fixed by next year. But the state funding formula is over. So what happens? And everybody's kind of like, I know what I think should happen. If the formula is done, like our state aid should be flat because there's no formula, but I don't really know. And that's going to be my concern, that I continue to follow through on this. So this is, I believe, an important step. But it's not the end of my work and it's the only thing I want to assure you of that.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Does anyone else want to comment now? Ms. Tatts.
Well, Mr. Davis made some great points. I can't speak as fluidly and in an extemporaneous way as Mr. Davis can. So I did prepare something. What makes me a little more comfortable with accepting, you know, going above the 2% cap is the fact that our school tax rate has gone down for the past several years. But I do acknowledge that property taxes have still gone up because of some property reassessments increasing. But, and this is, you know, we definitely need to provide for our student needs. So I am in favor of it. And I support most of the proposed additions, especially those that replace items and positions that have been eliminated over the years. And there's nothing that any of us will propose that is bad. I mean, they're all wonderful things that we, we can argue are good for the district. But I do, I mean, I think that full-day kindergarten is a commendable goal, but, and it may be a mandate in the future, but I think we have serious issues that need to be addressed now. And my priority is what is best for students. In 2019, we lost 51 staff positions and lots of other brutal things that happened, like, you know, courtesy busing was removed and the pay-to-play, along with other problems. And we also, there's been a slow erosion of staffing and other resources before 2019 and since 2019. Anyway, of those 51 staff positions, 29 of them were teaching positions. Like I said, we lost a number of them before 2019 and some since then. And there were respondents to the recent survey that they indicated that increasing instructional staff in areas of student need is the top priority. That's also my top priority as well because that helps students directly. Related to that, many classes in grades seven through 12 are quite large. Some are 30 or more. Compounding that is the fact that the elimination of some levels have resulted in a wider range of student abilities in a majority of classes in grades six through 12. The referendum did replace some of the eliminated teaching positions from past years, but not all of them. Elementary class sizes are also quite high. In 2019, seven elementary classroom teaching positions were eliminated and two elementary classroom teaching positions were eliminated since then. None of those have been replaced. The proposed budget cuts in April included cutting 11 teaching and counseling positions that were part of the referendum, five teaching and counseling positions from attrition, and another teaching position. In those proposed budget additions, those positions, in these proposed additions, those positions are reinstated, but no additional teaching positions were added. So there has been no increase to the instructional staff in areas of student need, even though, as I said, that was a top priority from the survey. And some of those $3 million in construction for full-day K will be used to modify existing classrooms, as Mr. Volpe said, to accommodate the needs of kindergartners with bathrooms and all that. And it's going to be using existing space. Some of our elementary schools are tight with space right now. To have full-day K, we would have to more than double the number of kindergarten classrooms to accommodate students attending full versus half-day, in addition to now including students who are getting full-day K elsewhere. For instance, last year's May enrollment of half and full-day K together was 309. This year's May enrollment of first grade is 420. That's an increase of 111. You know, the students who had gone elsewhere are now coming to here for first grade. I don't see how this plan is feasible without creating additional space unless we increase class sizes even more. At the very least, I would preclude the possible addition of much-needed elementary teaching positions because there will be no space to accommodate them. And, you know, I was a high school teacher, but I really think, you know, having smaller class sizes is so important at the elementary level because that's when they're young and we can really get them on the road to a good educational experience. I am grateful to the teachers, aides, students, and parents who have worked hard to fill in some of the gaps for the sake of the students. But large class sizes, as well as a wider range of abilities, have an insidiously negative effect on students, regardless of instructional strategies and everyone's best efforts and expertise. It's death by a thousand little cuts. And I've since found out, and I think that's similar to some Taylor Swift song, so, but that's a saying that's been around for a while. I taught high school math for 32 years. I had experience with large and... I taught high school math for 32 years. I had experience with large and small classes. Regardless of my efforts and applied strategies, the students in the larger classes did not get what they deserved and needed. So I repeat, to provide what is best for our students, we should increase instructional staff in areas of student need.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Does anyone else want to make any comments before we move forward?
Oh, go ahead.
Miss Lanningbeater?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Ms. Nurse?
I didn't prepare anything. I knew that I was going to speak because I agree with what everybody's saying. Our state did not do its due diligence, and they haven't for the past several years. We are digging ourselves out of a hole because nobody else will do the proper thing. And I've addressed it in the past couple of meetings when we've had state advocates who are sitting in seats in the government come and have, for the second year in a row, given us a one-time gesture of funds. I talked to Mr. Volpe about my feelings about that, and, you know, I understand that I should not bite the hand that feeds me, but those are low expectations for our trends. And I think, you know, when I thought about the referendum before I was on the board for kindergarten full day and that what it was tied to, and I didn't understand it the way it has been, as much as it has been presented, in clear-cut numbers of what the state has done, you know, to think that one school district gets $41 million, just makes no sense to have anybody with a deficit. There should be nobody in red, you know, give them $32, $33 million and keep us at zero. So unfortunately, this is what happened. So I will definitely be voting yes on this budget because my role here is to do what's best for the district and thinking of the community, but this is what we need for kids. I was not going to talk about the kindergarten extended day, sorry, the kindergarten full day, but just in hearing everybody else's thoughts, as a primary teacher, elementary teacher, who has a reading specialist certificate and has worked with struggling students, there is research that usually can be spun either way. I have seen no research that has ever contradicted the importance of early intervention. We have not been able to discuss full-day kindergarten. I know before my time, it was discussed and tried to be there for referendum, but things have changed in what our needs are from 2019, 2020 to where they are now. And I had a good conversation with Mr. Volpe earlier today because I believe in that we need to have not as many kids sitting in study halls at the high school, and we need to offer more electives. And, you know, along with early intervention, our primary schools or elementary schools shouldn't have more than 23, 24 at the most in our classes. I believe in all of that, but if we really want to align students to have the most success possible, it really needs to start in kindergarten. So I would definitely support that. And I look forward to conversations, you know, right now, it's just about getting this budget passed. And, you know, it is an uncomfortable situation that I, you know, we just asked for money, for money from the public, and they were gracious enough to vote a referendum. And, you know, we were all so proud and excited, and then this happened and put us back at, you know, zero because I think we had the referendum for 2.8, and I mean, maybe we're $100,000 ahead, but, you know, that's about it. So as unfortunate as it is, I will definitely be supporting this budget and everything on it.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Ms. Trujillo and the Ms. Lanningbeater?
Do you want to go first?
Thank you. I too am not good at speaking off the cuff, so I wrote down my thoughts. I think I tend to be a quieter one up here on the dance, but tonight's vote, in terms of the budget, seems to me to be one of the most important decisions I've made so far. So I wanted to explain kind of where I was coming from with my vote. As has been mentioned many times tonight, our school district has suffered unsustainable losses year after year as the state has continually cut Hillsborough's school funding. In the wake of a global pandemic, on top of these funding cuts, our district has struggled year after year to do more with less. Our teachers not only have had to navigate their jobs with fewer supplies, but in many cases have seen their class sizes increase, creating pressure to reach more students with fewer resources, all the while managing the long-term ramifications that the COVID-19 pandemic has had on all of us. I do want to commend the district, both staff and administration, on their efforts to continue to provide our students with a quality education. We truly do have wonderful people educating our children. But we, as a district, have reached a point where creative solutions to budget shortfalls and doing more with less is no longer possible. The recent legislation passed in Trenton has provided us an opportunity to recover from our losses in state aid and position ourselves to be in a place where we can look to strengthen our quality education, giving our teachers and our students the financial support that is truly needed. By voting yes tonight to go beyond the 2% tax cap, we are making an investment in our future, and there is no other choice in my mind. We owe it to the hard-working educators in this town, and we owe it to our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lanningbeater.
So I appreciate, I appreciate hearing everybody's points of view, and I've talked to many of you in the days leading up to this. So for me, it's a balance between student needs and fiscal responsibility. And while I had advocated all along to have, you know, anyway, to have our budget, to allow our district to go above 2% cap along the way, that wasn't the case. And so when we were offered this opportunity, I was, it was not a great solution, but I was like, okay, this is, this is something I have to do. It's $5.7 million above the 2% from back in April. It was tough, but for the students. So it was like, for me, that was balancing, putting student needs and comparing it to fiscal responsibility, student needs one and that one. But then Ms. Stats actually, as she explained, all the cuts that were from 2019, 2020, and I, actually, Mr. Volpe, you were here for part of that, but Ms. Stats and I were the only ones on the board at that time. And the $5 million or $5. whatever million dollars in cuts, which was 57 positions and 51 full-time employees, was devastating at the time. It was, I mean, we had a packed house here. And for me, to see a budget that is showing us $3 million going to full-day kindergarten but not bringing back those positions, and I've said this, and it's a terrible thing to say because I don't believe it, but it really feels like if we don't restore those positions, that, those cuts appears to be like, they were justified. I mean, I don't believe it. It's, but it seems that if we're, if we have an extra $3 million and we're thinking that a new program, full-day kindergarten, is more important than the programs that were cut, I don't know what other conclusion I can draw from that. And so that's where I struggle because I want to raise, I don't want to, but I think it's important. We need to stabilize our district, but to have $3 million go to a new program that didn't exist before, just, I really, I can't, I can't vote yes for that. Like, I just feel like then drop it by $3 million, but I don't, I don't want to do that. I really think our base budget needs to be the $5.7 million, bring back those positions, reduce class sizes. Because when I, I went back to my notes and the notes from, actually, I pulled it off the website, the staff cuts, like where they were in the elementary school, the sum of the full-time employees, 15. In the high school, it was 10. The middle school was 6. Aris was 5 and 1/2. I mean, these are, that was the increase in class sizes that is just, I think it's, it's like that, what did you say, Ms. Stats? Like the death by 1,000 cuts. It's like, it just happens, and it's, we kind of just get used to it. So for me, I was really surprised to see that a new program was going to be added. Okay, so that was number one. Number two was respect to the long-term plan. And I know, Mr. Volpe, you said that the board's role is to, to, you know, pass the number. I was comfortable with the number, but given where it's going to be spent, I'm not comfortable with that. And I think I'm going to be voting no on that. But more so, I want the board to think about the long-range plan because we talked about, like, there's speculation as to why Hillsborough keeps getting cut. Well, NJSPA has done, like, we had, it's like the School Funding Reform Act, right? And they explain, like, where the components are, and I don't claim to understand all of it, but most, but there's a formula in here that talks about equalization aid equals adequacy budget minus local share. And that's like fancy, like complicated words, but the important thing is that our local share keeps increasing. And the reason Montgomery, I believe, is getting more money is because when I moved here like 20 years ago, they actually, I believe their budget, their local taxes paid about 90% of their school district budget, and the state kicked in the rest. Well, they were paying more than their fair share back then. So my biggest concern is that next year, the state is going to, and I don't understand what you meant about like this formula's not going to be run, the formula's going to be run every year now. So every year, they're going to calculate a new local share, a new equalization aid, and if our local share keeps going up, then our state aid's going to go down. And, yeah, okay. So my concern is like, if we put $3 million into full-day kindergarten and we lose more money, then what do we do with full-day kindergarten? Are we then going to say, well, we already sunk the cost into construction, so we have to continue with full-day kindergarten, and then we increase class sizes? So that's, that's where, like, I can't believe I'm saying this because I was actually one of the ones who really want, like, I was, the, back in 20, I think it was 2019, I don't remember exactly, we went to the delegate assembly of school boards and we asked the state or the NJSPA just to do exactly, well, it's not quite exactly, because we asked them to do it year over year, like, so basically, if we lost, whatever we lost that year, we could go above the cap. So they didn't quite, they gave us the orange life preserver, not the blue one, right? So I, so I get it. So I was like, I decided I was like on board to go the 5.7, but to, to have it be full-day kindergarten and not the teaching staff that we lost, just doesn't sit right with me. So, thank you.
And, you know, board members can speak all they want. I just want to say too, what we're talking about too is we're talking about adding permanent funds to our tax levy. So we, one of my slides talked about, we've been cut for five years. As much as everybody wants all of this stuff done in one year, we're going to have this year over year over year, and we can slowly put back what was taken away. I would love to say I'm a magician and I can deliver all things to all people all at once. I can't do that. It is my intent, if you remember, for those of you who are on the board from my 100-day report, if you do remember that, 80% of my 100-day report was about staffing. I just can't put it all back right away, and I would caution the board about going full-fledged into all staffing in year one. And I'll tell you why. It's for one of the reasons Ms. Trujillo just brought up. What if the state comes back and says, hey, we're getting cut, and we put everything into recurring expenses? If we put some things into construction and move forward and we get cut, we could say, oops, we got to stop the construction. If we put it all into staff and our concern is that the state's going to take more away, we're going to be back in that perpetual, you get hired in Hillsborough, you get non-renewed in Hillsborough, you get hired in Hillsborough, you get cut in Hillsborough. And I want us to get out of that routine where we can't recruit or retain staff. I want us on a sustainable path moving forward. I want everything that you guys want. I just can't do it all in one year.
Okay. So, you can fight it out.
I just want to reiterate something because I've heard it said a couple of times here, I think. If we approve this proposed budget tonight, and even if there's, even if the final budget is approved in July with these numbers, it remains true that not a dollar would be spent on some of these categories without explicit board approval at the time.
If you're specifically talking about, because I know you'd mentioned full-day kindergarten, would it be my intent is that if the board passed this, and then assuming that on July 15th, everybody's still thinking the same thing, that we're going to pass it on July 15th, I would probably at that time end up bringing something to you from our architects about what potential costs might be to start looking into the renovation of classrooms. They wouldn't have costs at that time, but they would give us a plan for what it would be. That would be something for the board to vote upon. If the board voted no, and I would advise you against that for what I said, but the board would have to vote on that. And if the board voted no, and I can't move forward with my architects, then I'm back to square one in our committee. Okay, well, if the board's not moving forward with this, what are we doing with this money? I still think the best use of it is to go in that direction.
Sure.
But to your point, Mr. Davis, there would be something to vote on in front of you, and the board would have to vote on that and then would give me, even if it's a 5-4 vote, the board then speaks in one voice, whether it's 5-4, 6-3, 9-0, in one voice telling me what to do. And it would give me a green light on that or it would give me a big stop sign.
And even at that point, if the architect has approved, and there's an expense for the actual work to be done, that needs to be approved. And if we hire staff for that, that has to be approved. And all of these things go through board approval. So this is not carte blanche to say, we've now approved everything and it's there. We still need to go through our paces procedurally.
Yes. My main point in laying out where I think this money should be spent is, again, for what communities have clamored for, that there's a lack of transparency, that, hey, if we approve this, we don't know what you're spending it on. Well, no, you do know what I want to spend it on. Now, you can disagree, but nobody's going to be able to say that I wasn't transparent, and I didn't want the board voting on anything, not understanding what my thinking was.
Mr. Hugh?
Well, then, I guess with respect to this, if you're talking about one-time costs, then what I don't understand is why wouldn't we keep the money in cap reserve, it's like $3.2 million, and use, do kind of like a half-half? So like, keep more money in cap reserve, like, say, half, like, $1.5 million in cap reserve to do the shutter doors and all those things, hire staff, reduce class sizes, and then down the road, if we want a full-day kindergarten, we use our cap reserve. And then that way, we would actually have another year or two to know what our state, because we're all projecting right now. We have no idea what state aid looks like next year. And to me, that seems like a more, like, conservative approach to our budget. See, like, that I could get behind because it would be going to the 5.7 million, increasing our instructional staff, so that means reducing class size, and then full-day kindergarten's not off the table, it just gets pushed down, and you're using our cap reserve in the future to do that one-time cost, knowing what your state aid's going to look like in the future.
So appreciate that. We do have committee meetings, obviously, before the July, board will finalize the vote on this. So we continue to have those discussions on the finalization of those numbers. I think tonight will at least be the first vote moving forward on what was presented. Hand up first.
So I'm glad that, basically, so today, we're just going to be voting on the big chunk of money, or in certain categories, right?
You have, in the agenda, you will see that there are numbers there.
Right, right.
That you are voting on that. You are not voting on my presentation. My presentation is to show yourself and the public, hey, if you're going to this number, what is the superintendent's plan to do with this money? And I've just tried to outline that for you.
And to your point, and I agree with that, I appreciate your own transparency. Also, you know, the fact that the cuts that have since been rescinded, you know, what they were on, you know, they, you know, they were cutting almost all, you know, almost all the staffing positions were teachers. And I appreciate all that transparency. And so I'm, and I guess one good thing about going beyond the 2% cap, at least, that is more sustainable, because it's, you know, added to the tax levy base, et cetera, as opposed to these one-shot, big check things that we get.
Ms. Nurse?
No, I know that earlier I said that I don't, you know, we're in a different place than we were in 2019. But if you remember, part of the budget crises for schools was not only the cuts, but it was also the state coming in and wiping everybody's capital reserve, that where you could only leave $1 million or $2 million in there, and any surplus was taken back by the state. So I would never try to dump too much in there, because, you know, these are, you know, times where we can't predict. We're predicting the worst, because that's what we've lived for six or seven years. So with this, you know, again, like everybody said, do we need the money or not? Is this, is this, this is the question that we need to answer. We will be talking about it, you know, further down the road. But I think the decision is for tonight, do we need this money to be able to be successful as a district?
Okay. So I'm going to close this for now. We'll come back to it on the action agenda, we'll have a second opportunity to speak. But I just want to say, like, listen, I've seen a lot of boards in different communities, and there's a lot of rubber stamping coming on, I think. And I've had conversations with some of the folks that didn't speak today at this point. There's a lot of care, and I'm very proud to be on this board with this group, because differing opinions, but there's a, there's a strong desire for positive results. So, thank you, guys. We'll continue. All right. Yes, we will now move on to more fun stuff like committee reports. So, do we have education? Ms. Jackson?
Yeah, I'll make this quick. We discussed revised curriculum, which we'll see later on in the agenda, the language instruction educational program, three-year plan, and revised course proposals, the TCNJ dual enrollment, mathematics course sequence at HMS, a survey, budget update, and we didn't have time to touch on the district calendars.
Okay, thank you. Do we have operations? We did that, right? Okay. And I can cover HR. Ms. Nurse was not able to join, so I chaired in her absence. Couple of things were covered. First, two job descriptions were reviewed and approved by the committee. Basically, Mr. Petuco shared his plans to restructure the titles of positions in the human resource department. We had some discussion there. There was agreement. On the action items side, we reviewed subrates, trying to ensure that we're a place that people want to be, and that we're not missing out on good subs by having rates below our neighboring districts. And the discussion was primarily to remove the incremental daily rate and just start at that rate, which was competitive with local districts. And I think we also talked about not only subs, but also, I think, lunch aids, custodians, secretarial clerical, bring those rates in line with the township, so that we could share resources if needed for those felon positions. We did speak about a one-day, one-day rate for HHS coverage due to graduation. Interim recommendations for interim supervisor for observations was discussed and agreed to. And then we obviously went into, because we all talk about it, the budget, and got some feedback and discussions there. And then we reviewed district calendars, and I think we didn't really get too super far there. But we're running out of time for religious holidays, so. With our calendar, we have a start date that's limiting in how we built it in the past, and we have an end date that is also a barrier. We have to squeeze all of these days in and be mindful. And there's also discussion about, you know, calling the religious holidays what they are, and not Spring Day 1, Spring Day 3, Fall Day 1. So we may in the future actually call out what the holiday is for, so people are very clear on the calendar. And that was discussed in that as well. On the governance committee, I think there was a simpler conversation, so was the budget and district calendars again. So, more of the same. Oh, and the ad hoc, if you want to cover the ad hoc committee.
So, and the ad hoc committee for activities fees met on May 29th. And I know it was part of the budget presentation. There was discussion with the proposed budget, what to do about activities fees. There were some people on the committee who thought it would be, we might be able to remove the policy altogether or reduce it. And then there were others who took a more conservative approach, again, just because of the unknown of, you know, we don't want, those people didn't want to take something to help their community and then have to put it right back again the following year if we were in the same situation. So we had a compromise that everybody liked, which was to, you know, if the budget does pass, that we will suspend the policy for a year. However, you know, our work this year, you know, involved, you know, hearing what a lot of our community members had to say, who wrote or spoke about the fees. So we do have, I believe it's in for the first reading tonight, we do have recommended policy changes in regards to activity fees based on the community's input and our committee discussions. There are three specifically. One will be that the policy does, will revise to read that there will be no charge for honor societies. A second revision would be that we will collect activities fee for clubs after the first meeting, if students decide to join. So they have that one meeting to go to find out some information and make a decision following that one meeting. And finally, the last revision that is in for the first reading is for unified sports. Instead of paying per season, that will run, because of the costs that look similar to track, we will run it just like track and the bands do, which is $100 for one or more unified sports. So it will be a one-time fee, regardless if participants participate in one season or all three seasons.
And that really only matters if we don't suspend the policy. Well, it's going to be in there, but in general, if we agree to the suspension, that'll be suspended for a year. And then if it got put in place next year, those changes would go into effect with the unsuspension. Is that a word? I'm going to board a bet, I need to get that right. Okay. All right. Any questions? Ms. Trujillo?
I had a question on the HR minutes that I looked at. I didn't see the interim supervisor on the agenda tonight. Is that forthcoming?
We're not actually hiring anybody right now. We're putting on a rate and potentially as needed for next year. So we actually don't have any dates on there right now. We are not hiring someone. If we do, rather than go in a circle, we have a rate and a person to approve when we need.
But then we would approve that?
Correct. The actual hiring, yes.
Okay. All right. We will move on to comments from the board and public. Public input on the reorganization action agenda, which includes budget comments as well, because that is an action agenda item. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there'll be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open to public comment. Members of the public are invited to comment, which I may do if they're attending in person. During first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school issue that a member of the public may feel, feels, may be of concern to the residents of the school district. That's for violation 0167. Before you say your comment, you will ask to provide your name and address. There is a thing limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions. Rather offers opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instance, if the board believes it's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. Many times, members of the public make comments as a question about personal hiring decisions, commonly due to the public meetings act, privacy rights of public employees, and companies therein. Do not bring the board to discuss personal issues in public session.
Good evening. Tom Isabella, Nine-Up Brenishan at Court. So I just first want to say to Mr. Volpe, thank you for what has been said at the dais by others, transparency. I don't agree with what's been laid out, quite frankly. Let me step back and say, first start by saying, I don't think that the state legislature or the governor should be given any kind of praise whatsoever. Since 2018, this current governor has put us in this position. And unfortunately, the state legislature, as Mr. Davis stated, punted the ball back to you all. I don't think we should exceed the 2% cap for the simple fact that you have residents here. And yes, I'm a product of the school district. I had a great education. But I truly believe that you are, not you, not you guys specifically, but just generally speaking, the taxpayers of this state, of this community can only take so much. And I think by exceeding that 2% cap, you're going to, one might say, oh, it's only a handful of dollars, whatnot. But, you know, every little bit adds up. And so I think that we need to be, we need to understand that there are people on fixed incomes and those who are older, who no longer have kids in the district, who will not benefit from what it is that you're speaking of, who also have skin in the game, who are paying out the nose in property taxes, and who will eventually say, I'm going to get up and leave. I'm going to move. And then what happens? You're going to shrink your tax base eventually, because you're going to force people out. And I understand that's not necessarily you guys' fault. But I also think we need to do a better job as a community, as a state, to scream holy hell to our state legislature specifically, because each governor's going to change, and as well as state legislators. But we need to scream holy hell that it is not right that Hillsborough has been singled out year after year, and we've lost all this money, and yet we seem to, we seem to be happy, which I am not. We seem to be happy that we say, oh, yes, this 45%, you know, restoration, great. Okay, well, that's a one-time, what I consider gimmick. It's a one-time gimmick. Plus this 5.7 million, you're going to increase the baseline, so taxes will continue to go up. And also, my concern is that whether we agree with all the programs that are set out in what you, in what you would like to see, Mr. Volpe, or not, how is it sustainable? We don't know that. We don't know whether we agree, whether the board agrees to what you've proposed or what you would like to see happen, or changes are made up to the 15th. We don't know if that's sustainable or not. And that's a big concern as well, long-term. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Amy Salinger, ATA, treasurer and teacher at Otten Road Intermediate School. I'm speaking in regards to the budget line item for tonight. I want to first thank everyone who has contributed to getting us to this place tonight, where we have the opportunity to repair a lot of the damages from the past. Since the massive cuts that started back in 2010, this district has struggled to try to restore us to where we are. The amount of programming cut from the students, along with the impact of increased class sizes, has been challenging, to say the least. In more recent years, the residents of Hillsborough have shown that they want what's best for our students by supporting two different referendums. The support of the Hillsborough community in returning this type of funding has allowed us to restore some of the lost positions, add new positions, including security for our schools, and install some much-needed infrastructure work. These are all wins. But S2 kept causing damage, and you did the best you could with what you were given. And now, with the hard work of our community, our superintendent and the board, the ATA, and our legislators, we have the opportunity to get out from under some of these effects. We have the opportunity to repair some of the damage. Do we know for sure what next year will bring? Maybe not. But we know that by saying yes tonight and passing this, we will be in a much better place next year than we have been for the last several years. Imagine a Hillsborough Township School District that is fully staffed and able to provide the most robust education possible for all students. Like someone had mentioned, more electives at the high school. That's definitely a place where we're lacking in comparison to some of our neighboring districts. Voting yes tonight helps us achieve this vision. This board has the opportunity to correct course for the students of Hillsborough Township Public Schools. This board, by voting yes, will not only help the current students enrolled, but future generations of Hillsborough students. This board can undo so much damage. Let that be your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Henry Goody, Hillsborough Education Association. Excuse me. I would like to first extend my congratulations to all of the retirees, and thank you for recognizing them tonight, you know, seeing that there's over seven centuries of experience. And you think about what that gave to these schools, right? And to sit in the presence of that, I think, while it's unfortunate that we're looking at that proud history and then contemplating what our future is, I think that it's a stark contrast and perhaps an appropriate one, because we have to look at who we are and where we're going. And we're looking at 700 years' worth of dedication and experience and wondering, you know, to Superintendent Volpe's point of, can I recruit and retain the best? We're seeing the best leave, right? We're seeing the best walk out, and rightfully so. They put in 40-plus years in some instances. But can we bring the best back if we're a district that is constantly in flux and we're a district that's constantly in chaos, right? And you heard my colleague speak about legacy, and that's their legacy. They left that legacy behind. They left a legacy that future educators can build on. And as a board, this is your opportunity to establish what your legacy will be. I think Ms. Lanning Beeter put it perfectly, that there is probably no vote that any of you will take that is more important and more pivotal and more deciding than the vote you will take tonight. Whatever decision you make on every budget and every expenditure forward is going to be influenced by this positive or negative. And we have to consider what that legacy is, because at its core, the definition of legacy is what you pass on, right? And we saw what those retirees passed on. We know what they've passed on. We see their students. Their students come back and become teachers in these districts, which is amazing, in this district, rather. And the question is, what will the board pass on? What decisions will we make tonight that allows us to pass something on? Will it be a district we're proud of? Or will it be one that's constantly on the verge of chaos and financial collapse, right? We can't keep sticking our finger in the dam. And we've talked about this. You've all talked about it. You've advocated for it, all of you, and you've done a lot of work for that, and I commend it. And so has our members in our association. So has our community. Thousands of people in our community sent letters asking for this bill to be passed. Thousands of them responded to the survey, and 83% of them said, yes, do this, do something, right? We've heard from the community. And is it perfect? Absolutely not. But we are not in the business of perfect. We are in the business of people, specifically students. And we have to do what we can to give them what they need in this moment, and this is what we have been given, right? And we can make it a blue or a red issue, but the reality of it is, is that school funding is purple, because both, everywhere has contributed in some way, right? The funding formula started with a Democratic governor, was made worse by a Republican one, and here we are, right? Everyone has some ownership in this, and at the end of the day, it's left to us to decide what to do with it, and we have the ability to make that choice. So I urge you not to make this a blue or red issue, but recognize it as a cardinal and gold issue. This is a Hillsborough issue, and you are in position to make a decision tonight that will impact countless students' lives, and I hope that your legacy will be a positive one. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hello. Alicia Gabor-Balas, live in Hillsborough. I wanted to also thank you for all of your hard work on everything that you've done, for reaching out to the community and asking questions. First, I wanted to just mention a few things for 11.2. I think this is the time I could mention that. For the official newspapers, I know that you have listed the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News, but usually when I ask people, what newspapers do you look at, they mention the Patch. So I was wondering if you could consider adding the Patch to that list. Regarding healthy school hours, I'm very thankful that you thought it was a priority to add it to the survey. I just wanted to add a reminder that it doesn't cost money to necessarily look at what you need to do in order to change the school start times. And also, just last thing, just wanted to point out that unlike the township, the school district is not given the opportunity to raise additional property taxes when new ratables are added, as Mr. Volpe pointed out. If you look at their budget, they do have a line item where they could do that, but the school district does not. I've talked to some people who are very anti-raising taxes, and they would be willing to add a percentage of the new taxes, of the new ratables, especially the new homes that we're building, market-rate ones. So, anyway, I can thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no others. Before we move to the action agenda, any board comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under the mid-year reorganization meeting items, I present for the board's Under the mid-year reorganization meeting items, I present for the board's consideration designation of signatories, designation of official newspapers, designation of depositories for school funds, board auditors, architect of record, school physicians, board attorney, insurance brokers of record, school warrants, board policies, job descriptions, school district curricula, field trip destinations, strong plus model for evaluations, NJ, SIAA Skyland Conference membership, affirmative action Title IX coordinator, Section 504 officer, liaison for homeless students, board secretary, attendance officer, public agency compliance officer, purchases from state contract vendors, advertising bids for goods and services, and cooperative purchasing.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Statz?
Well, I have a question about 11.12, about the school district curricula. And the education committee is also on the agenda, that we are going to have dual enrollment with TCNJ, but in, maybe it's because it's, you know, hasn't been approved yet, but in the curricula here, it only mentions RVCC with the dual enrollment. Is it necessary that we add the dual enrollment with TCNJ?
For, for what you're about to approve, that's for already existing curricula that hasn't been previously approved. Anything new will require separate motions, which you'll find on later.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
I like the idea of adding the Patch to the official notification list. Now, being that that's not a hard copy newspaper, would that meet the criteria for public notification?
Mr. Ecker, do you know if, since it's not a newspaper, if it counts as a newspaper?
I mean, it wouldn't really matter if we're adding it as an additional. If we're replacing one, then it would matter.
Okay. So we can just add it?
Yeah, it could just be added.
I think by, I think by motion, it could be, it could then be added.
If you want a motion to add that, you can make that motion to be seconded?
Yes. I'd like to move that we add the Patch to the list of official newspapers.
Do we have a second?
So moved.
All right.
Sorry.
So moved. Do you have a discussion comment?
Well, if it's online, isn't there also tap into? It's free, right? I mean, I don't know if it's free for us to do.
I think it's free to advertise it. I doubt it.
We can notify them.
Notify.
What's that?
We can notify. We can't guarantee that they're going to post it, because they may charge for it, but we can notify them.
So here's a question. In the Hillsborough Beacon, which I didn't even know is a print edition anymore, we pay for that?
Yes, we pay for that, and the Courier-News for our legal ads.
Okay. I'm sorry, but I think, I don't even know if the Beacon is still, I used to get it, and I can't get it at my house anymore. I've given them money. And it's like, they don't, I mean, I stopped giving them money, but I'm surprised that they exist.
So, so we can take this off at a committee meeting and review and see where it's delivered?
Sure. I don't think there's any harm in Mr. Ecker and I doing our due diligence if we wanted to approve what's on the board agenda tonight and then just give us some more time to look into it, and then it can be approved on a future agenda. Since I don't know those, the only thing I would need to do is to remove that motion. So my suggestion is, let's approve it as is. We'll come back, and if we need to add those two, we can add those two.
Okay, so I will withdraw the motion.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions on this action agenda? Okay, so we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Statz?
Yes.
Mr. Trejo?
Yes, motion passes. Then really quickly, we'll add that to the operations agenda.
In the area of education, I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions.
We skipped the approval of minutes.
We skipped.
We did skip minutes.
We did skip minutes.
Yes.
We moved right to the, to that. All right, motion to approve executive session minutes 5:13:24, motion to approve regular meeting minutes 5:13:24. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, back to 12.
So my apologies for that. Long, long list of meetings. I skipped over that. So, in the area of education, I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions. Professional travel-related expenses, permitting the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, and bullying determinations, approving revised curriculum, approving the language instruction educational program, revised course proposals for dual enrollment purposes, memorandum of understanding between the Hillsborough Township Public Schools and TCNJ for the purpose of dual enrollment, approving staff for the 2024 MLL summer program, approving staff for the summer model testing, approving acceptance of the Teacher Climate and Culture Innovation Grant, approving stipends associated with the Teacher Climate and Culture Grant, approving staff for multilingual learners' wraparound program, approving stipends for participants in the UME and the PLC, approving the articulation agreement between the College of New Jersey and the Hillsborough Township School District for the Professional Development School Network, approving overnight trips, approving curriculum writing common assessment development for English Language Arts, approving curriculum writing common assessment development for mathematics, approving revised list of concurrent enrollment courses and stipends for 2324, and approving the continued long-term suspension of two students.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Statz?
This is regarding the dual enrollment. We did discuss this in education committee, but, and I like how TCNJ will accommodate more offerings for dual enrollment than RVCC does, but the cost for the students for TCNJ to participate in dual enrollment is $5.50, whereas at RVCC it has been $2.50. So I'm wondering if at least for the courses that they, that are available at RVCC with dual enrollment, if we can maintain that, and then the remaining courses be available for dual enrollment at TCNJ.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Kim? Let me ask Dr. Feltry, too, for a second.
Yeah, I, I thought I had replied via email, but I have to speak with Mrs. Povall, and she was out today, so I don't know the logistics right. So, yeah, she was out today. I didn't have an opportunity to connect with her.
Yeah, we can look into that.
So, should we, should we table this, or?
You don't want to approve TCNJ at all?
Well, I mean, if we, but we'd be approving it for all of the courses, and I want to approve some of those courses for TC, for RVCC instead. The ones that are currently available for dual enrollment RVCC, I want that to continue.
So, so does, would voting yes here restrict us from also offering those from RVCC?
Okay, well, Mrs. Povall shaking her head that it doesn't restrict us, so we could be offering at both. So then the students would choose.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Trejo?
I wanted to just comment on item 12.14, which was the overnight trips, now that the school year is almost over. And on the one hand, I'm happy to see that these trips are in the summer, so outside of school. On the other hand, the cost is really expensive. So it's like $610 for the dance team and $1,200 for the FBLA team. And I feel that this is kind of continuation of like my comments earlier in the year about certain overnight trips for students at the high school level that are quite expensive. And I think excludes certain students who might not be able to afford it, number one. And number two, that happen during the school year, so that they're missing instruction, they're missing, yeah, they're missing instruction, and it's close to exam time. So I just, I'm not against these overnight trips, but I just wish that we could, as a board, discuss what the board's philosophy is on student trips. Like, could there be a trip, a, a trip that's closer rather than Disney World, which is very expensive, $1,700? So, thank you.
On a related note, it was, Ms. Lanning-Beater and I were at the middle school HSA meeting, and, and there was some concern about the, a pretty significant increase in the cost for their eighth-grade trip to Hershey Park and, I guess, Gettysburg, right? You know, enough to maybe that's, and there was a significant decrease in the number of students who, who attended the trip this year compared to years past. So I think this is worth investigating and discussing.
Agreed. Thank you. Ms. Nurse?
I'm sorry. Going back to the partnerships, it's, it's a long meeting. Is there a way to make sure that we modify the agenda or something to ensure that RBC is going to be put on there or not? Like, I don't want us to miss a window. I don't want us...
This would need to be in the next committee meetings.
It's already on.
We, yeah, we already have an agreement with RVCC.
So what was the concern before? Just that...
That it continues. That we're not eliminating the option.
That TCNJ isn't bumping out RVCC.
Is that the case?
No.
So because they're both on, they're both options?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I thought that's what it was, but then I was confused by the conversation.
It's a lively group tonight. All right, Ms. Statz?
So we do have a, an agreement, I, I don't recall it being here, with RVCC. I, we discussed it with being, I think, for a film course and I think it was for, and not just that.
I don't remember. Film course in English.
Wait, isn't that like on the agenda tonight, or that AP courses? I thought there was, I saw some names, like for that dual enrollment.
No, I think it was under Human Resources.
What, what's the question at the, at the DAS at this time? I don't know what we're looking for.
No, I think we're just wanting to make sure that...
Oh, here, I found it.
RVCC did not get lost in the shuffle somewhere.
So in 12.17, there's motion to approve concurrent enrollments, is that, but that was 2324 for the stipends? Is that where we're talking? But that was for this current school year.
For 12.5.
12.5.
Motion to approve revised course proposal for dual enrollment. That's 12.5, yes.
So what I'm saying is that we also had 12.17 that has the revised list of concurrent enrollment courses?
That's just, that's for this current year.
Right, right. Oh, so you're saying that it's going to...
I think we see it in 11...
These are going forward.
11.12, 11.12 under district curricula, it is labeled 2425. Like, if you look under grades nine to 12, I see it under English, English four for both honors and CP, it does say RVCC concurrent enrollment. Mrs. Feltry pointed out one for math, so I think it is here. Yes, RVCC concurrent enrollment.
Yeah, but it doesn't mention TCNJ. I guess...
There's a separate one for TCNJ.
Because we didn't vote on TCNJ yet, right?
We haven't had TCNJ yet.
I see a paragraph here that says, my recommendation is to keep art enrollment in English four and advanced video and film with RVCC and move all AP courses to TCNJ for 2425.
Just out, I mean, especially when you compare it to 11.12, there seems to be a contradiction there. Because in 11.12, it doesn't include beyond just those two courses for RVCC, all the ones that we have traditionally been having dual enrollment, RVCC is still there for 2425. And for 12, four and 12.5, it's, there's a huge increase beyond what we now do with dual enrollment with RVCC, because TCNJ is more open to accommodating more courses. Just to reiterate what I was saying before, is I'm okay with that, but I'd like to still keep what our current dual enrollment courses are at RVCC because of the cost savings for our students.
Joel, you were saying that under 12.6, what you just read?
Under 12.5, under administrative content, there's a revised course proposals memo. And at the end of that memo, I read that closing paragraph. There's more there that I can read.
Other agenda items in the meantime?
So I think this is, would need more conversation.
So can we approve it as is and look to make an amended one at the next meeting? What's the further discussion?
I feel like we're saying that a lot recently. I'm sorry, because I, like, I, I feel like, why, I mean, if we don't need to rush this, and it could be cleaned up by July, and it's not going to harm anybody, can we just clean it up?
So you want to hold on 12.5? Do you want to hold on 12.5? Because right now, we already approved 11.
Yes.
There's some reasons stated in this memo for changing the nature of the relationship that may be more than what we want to get into here at the, at the DAS, because it's part of a memo to Dr. Feltry from Cindy Povall. So there's a conversation going on there about why this change is being recommended. And I think it would behoove us, out of respect for the member participants in this conversation, to give it a minute to air through and find out why this change is being recommended.
Let Ms. Povall at the next education meeting.
So in moving forward, if you would like to take it off of the agenda...
Somebody would need to make a motion to...
I move to take, table 12.5 until we can make sure that we are aligned and know exactly what we would like in terms of the concurrent classes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, just, just to be clear, is this a cross-reference? Oh, I'm sorry. Is this going to be a cross-reference of the multiple agenda items, then, to bring it all in sync?
I think we need to have a full discussion at Ed Committee, because I think I've heard several different things, and I don't have a complete understanding of what exactly is being looked for. So if I don't have a complete understanding of what's being looked for, it needs further discussion.
Sure. And, but I think you pointed out 11, I can't remember the number.
Yeah, it was 11.12. 11.12 had a lot of course offerings that had RVCC listed there.
Okay.
Whereas the recommendation in the revised course proposal memo said to stick with only two or three classes at RVCC and move the rest to TCNJ.
And the ask was to have both offered, so there was a cost savings opportunity for students if they chose to go through RVCC.
Okay.
So I think we need to table that and have the conversation, understand why that recommendation was put in place. There may have been a reason for that that we want to entertain, but for now, we can table...
Yeah, that I get. I just was getting, I was getting a little confused with the cross-reference to Section 11, so that's why.
We already approved 11, so that's in place. If we want to make the amendment, we can talk about 12 and then put it back on the agenda for the next meeting.
The reference was because there were a lot more courses that had RVCC under it, like the math course and everything.
So we were confirming and then changing, which got confusion.
And ultimately, that would be, I mean, it would be great if we were able to offer students the choice, you know, as what they want their transcripts to look like.
Okay. All right, so we need to take a roll to table 12.5? So take roll. Mr. Davis?
So what do we vote?
Yes would table. Yes would table. Yes would table 12.5? You say no.
I'm voting no.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Statz?
Yes.
Mr. Trejo? And Mr. Marini? Yes, motion passes. So now we'll take a roll on, on the total agenda minus 12.5. Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahill?
Yes, except I'm going to vote no on 12.1, the trip to Dallas, Texas, the trip to Connecticut, and the trip to Missouri, Kansas City, Missouri.
And Mr. Marini? Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. In the area of Human Resources, I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions. Authorizing the superintendent to affirm appointments of non-administrative personnel during the summer months. Approving the suspension of a district employee. Approving the retirements and resignations. Appointments for 24, 25. Reappointments for 24, 25. Change employment status. Transfers and assignment changes for 24, 25. Approving leaves of absence. Motion to revise an unaffiliated administrator salary. Motion to approve administrator salary change. Approving substitutes. Approving a mentor. Turnkey trainers. Student teacher placements. Six and seven period coverage. Extra coverage. ESY program staff. District summer work hours. Transportation summer work. CST summer work. Summer athletic camp 2024. Fall athletic coaches for 24, 25. And settlement agreement with the HEA.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Any discussion? Ms. Stats?
Regarding 13.4, I'm not too, I'm not agreeable to having Peggy Valenti be the interim supervisor for evaluations through June of 2025. I could, I would agree to it through November because there will be a supervisor out on leave until then. But as written, I am against approving Peggy Valenti for that.
Yeah, and maybe we should, I should have written this differently. We're not hiring somebody for the full year. The intent of this was to just set a rate and we've used her in the past to approve her as needed. But I see how you're looking at that. That looks like we're hiring her for the full year. If we wanted to pull it and have further discussion, we could because it's not my intent to try to sneak in an administrative hire here. It was for basically substitute interim purposes. But if the board wants to pull it, that's fine.
And it does say as needed. I think that's...
And I would be bringing the need to the board for further approval. But if it makes anybody uncomfortable to put that on right now, no big deal, take it off.
I would like to take it off because that was actually what I was looking for. I couldn't find it, but thanks for pointing it out.
It's fine. There needs to be a motion to take it off.
So moved.
Did I make the motion?
She made the motion.
She's made the motion.
Oh, second.
Any discussion before we roll?
Just a brief one, and I think this is to Ms. Nurse, because I see a lot of resignations on the agenda, so I was just wondering if, sorry, HR committee could maybe discuss the update on the exit surveys?
On the web?
Exit surveys as staff are leaving. There was a discussion before about having an exit survey.
I can answer that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we can do that. Mr. Petuco has all of those information ready to go. He also has data for the past three years as far as people who have left the districts and reasons why, and he's sitting in the audience, and I appreciate you having all that information, Mr. Petuco, and we'll talk about it in July.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
All right. So we'll then take roll on the motion to remove Peggy Valenti. Yes. Mr. Davis?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Craig?
No.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
No.
Mr. Lee?
No.
Ms. Nurse?
No.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Trahill?
Wait, so voting yes means we're removing it? Yes.
No. Motion fails. So we will move to then a roll on the agenda as stated. And individuals can vote no to that line item if they so choose for the record. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Trahill?
Yes, except for the Ms. Valenti.
And Mr. Marini? Yes. Motion passes.
Okay. In the area of operations, I'd ask for the board's consideration of the following motions. Approving the revised 24, 25 tentative budget as stated. Accepting the fiscal year 25 stabilized school budget aid grant award. Approving the health benefits waiver. Approving the state aid cut restoration waiver. Approving the resolution for travel reimbursement expenses and maximum travel for 24, 25. Approving professional services maximum expenditures for 24, 25. Capital reserve withdrawals for 24, 25. Maintenance reserve withdrawal for 24, 25. Approving corrective action plan for semi-monthly bills. Monthly financial statement. Financial status. Line item transfers. Capital maintenance reserve transfer. 24, 25 debt service lease payment schedule. Special education tuition contract with UC ESC for the 24, 25 school year. Approving agreement with Catholic charities for before and school after care for the 24, 25 school year. Professional services for nursing and therapy services for the 24, 25 school year. Approving transportation agreement for 24, 25 with Dell Valley Regional High School. Approving 24, 25 transportation route renewals with Montauk Transit. 24, 25 transportation route renewals with First Students. 24, 25 transportation route renewals with Frank Valcheck, Inc. Resolution for bathroom waivers for 24, 25. Approving HVAC rooftop unit replacement and condenser repiping for Hillsborough High School. Approving the proposal for the purchase of literacy materials. Authorizing cancellation of stale outstanding checks. Approving the disposal and sale of obsolete equipment. Approving out of district placements for 23, 24. And approving out of district placements for school year 24, 25.
That's it? All right. We'll take a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Jackson?
This is packed. So the first, 14.1, is the actual budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
14...
Clarity?
Yeah.
Again, back to 14.1. So what we are voting on is to approve raising that money.
Correct. If you look, if it makes you feel better, if any board members open up the public content on 14.1, and Mr. Eckert, you can just double check that that is verifiable right there for everybody, that is what you are voting on. Not necessarily my presentation.
That's correct. Any other questions?
It's also 14.4?
It's 14.1 through 14... Through 14.9 are all the budget resolutions. They're all related to the budget.
In case you didn't hear that, everything from 14...
Most of the more ones that have been approved already at the previous budget hearing. The only ones that are new are the ones for the additional taxes, the one for the acceptance of the state grant for the 45%.
So which numbers, I'm sorry, can we just, 1 through 4?
For, so I think what Ms. Jackson is asking is with respect to this new legislation, the additions are 14.1 because that includes the 5.7 million addition from the April 29 budget. That's 14.1. 14.2 is at the, that's the 45%. So that's a yes. That's just a gift. And then 14.3, we approved it back in April 29. So that's, if you voted yes, it's a yes. And then 14.4 is that new legislation.
That goes above the cap.
That goes above the cap. So if you were going to vote no, that would be 14.1 and 14.4, I believe.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that.
All right.
So I do have a comment, and as I said, it pains me to say this, and I know we're not, we're not voting on full day kindergarten, but to have full day kindergarten be the top thing in there, it just makes me feel like I can't support this budget this time. And so I just, I wish there was another way because I do think that we need the $3 million, but I know that my fellow board members are, they're going to vote yes, so I'll just keep it. Anyway, I go last.
But we are just voting, I mean, I know this is a proposed specifics, which I agree in the spirit of transparency, even if I don't necessarily agree with the specifics, but we are just, we are voting on these big chunks. We're not voting on the actual content, on what they're going to be spent on.
So I'm going to clarify and just make sure it's very clear. We are voting on the budget which has these chunks in there. So there's some monies that are dedicated to capital spend, some that are to recurring revenue. If we want to change that in the future, capital to capital is easy. If we want to change capital to recurring, that requires county board approval. But generally speaking, we can change all of this with the proper approvals, but it does put things into buckets of spend.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not voting specifically for...
No, those things have individual votes. Correct. We could all vote yes and then all vote no on everything related to kindergarten. That could happen. But we still have the money aligned and in the budget if that were the case.
That never happened. I mean, like, in my experience, whatever the tentative is that we set always, and that happened in 2019 when we were told that we would have opportunities to change what was actually cut in the budget, and that didn't happen, so...
It's the prerogative of the board, though, so the board is accountable for that. Okay. All right. So we will then move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes, except for 14.1 and 14.4.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Trahill?
Yes, except for 14.1, 14.4, and 14.7.
And Mr. Marini? Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. We still got more to do.
It took you a while, but you stuck around. Congratulations for staying to this meeting.
In the area of policy, I would ask the board's consideration to approve the following motions. The policy reviewed by the ad hoc committee for first reading and the motion to suspend policy 2436 activity participation fee for the 24, 25 school year.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question? The motion to suspend the activity fee, is that premature relative to the implementation of the budget?
Well, two things. That was what Ms. Nurse was talking about earlier from her ad hoc committee, and if you, in my budget presentation, that is accounted for in my budget presentation, the loss of this revenue for one year.
And if we were to vote this down in the next meeting, God forbid, we could then reinstate the policy.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Ms. Stats?
Regarding 15.1 with the, I, I like how there was a sort of a compromise, I guess, for the unified team members because before this year, they weren't paying anything. This year, they were paying $100 for each time, I guess. But I would like to propose that they pay, almost like how the clubs are, that they pay a $50 one-time fee for many reasons, one of which is the time that is spent on it is almost equivalent to a club. So just a proposal, if you want to take that back to...
We could take that for a second reading. Yes, we'll be back.
I think just, we did talk about that in the committee. However, you know, we are, it is an athletic program and we, you know, we were hopes that we did not want to discriminate in any way for that, what is considered an athlete. We have our athletes, they pay a fee. We wanted to keep that pretty much standard throughout the whole program for all of our athletic programs. So that definitely was something, we were looking at the time and everything, and so although we, we understand that there is less time involved, that is how we came up with something that's running similar to track. But our athletes are our athletes, and we wanted to make sure there was no disparity within the athletic programs.
All right. Seeing no other hands raised, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Trahill?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini? Yes. Motion passes. We'll now move on to the public comment period, the second one. We very much welcome the public during board meetings. There'll be two, 30-minute periods of time maybe of public comment. Members of the public are invited to comment, which may do if they're attending in person. During the second public comment period, there we go. Members of the public may comment on any school school issue that a member of the public may feel to be concerned of the district as per by law 0167. Before you state your comment, you may ask a providing address or a 30-minute limit of public comment. Please understand that public forums are not structured as a question and answer session, but rather offers opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In case the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. Many times a member of the public makes a comment or has a question about personnel hiring decisions, kind of the unemployment act and privacy rights of public employees encompass their end of offering the board to discuss personal issues in public session. Okay. Seeing none, we will close public comment. We will open up to the board for any final comments before we move back into exec.
Rhea?
Rhea?
Yes, so just to provide one last update on the end of year events at the high school. So of course, as the school year is ending, the atmosphere has been pretty positive. We had the senior picnic last Friday, which was very enjoyable for all the seniors from signing each other's yearbook to signing the Big H at the front of the high school. It was very, it was a very fun activity. And overall, the events that have been happening are just yearbook distribution, and of course, final exams are coming up. And in relation to final exams, I want to reflect upon what I brought up. In the beginning of the school year, I brought up some concerns regarding the bathroom rules and the final exam rules, and we have gone to ball rolling with respect to that. I believe there have been some changes. I'm not exactly sure with the final exam policy or final exam rule at the school. And I know for a fact that there have been changes with the bathrooms as well. So that's definitely a positive start, and of course, as the years go by, there will be more optimistic changes. And yeah, just, I wanted to give an update on that and the final year activities.
Thank you, and thank you again for your service to the board.
Thank you, Rhea. Can I, can I say a couple things to you that just reminded me of some things? Our Unified Athletes, too, and this isn't about policy or what's being charged, they are real athletes. And like you said, that our Unified Track Team, and I'll do a sports update for the whole year in the next meeting, finished second in the state in the Unified Program, so I was very proud of them. And also, I want to send a special thanks, congratulations to our girls' track team who are the undefeated and undisputed Group Four champions. It's always nice when you bring home a group title. So I just wanted to say those quick little things, and we'll have a sports update for the entire year at our board meeting in July. Ms. Nurse?
I'm not sure if this is the right time to do it or wait until executive session, but I know you weren't there when Mr. Volpe talked about one of the things in executive session, not having the same time constraints, and I'm not sure, since it's so late, if we're most effective going back into executive committee at this point.
We have to to meet the requirements, or we need to schedule a second, separate meeting.
There was conversation, I mean, maybe we can discuss it in executive session.
So we can move in and if we choose to end your question.
And also, on May 15, marquee awards, which honor excellence in musical theater in high schools in Middlesex and Somerset counties were presented. And Hillsborough High School's Something Rotten got four awards for best student orchestra, best choreography, best supporting actress, Sam Soible, and best direction under Ms. Malone. So congratulations to them.
Thank you for the update. Ms. Lanning Beeter?
I just wanted to quickly report. I was able to visit the middle school HSA meeting along with Ms. Stats. I appreciated being able to go and listen in and, you know, to take on that perspective. They discussed all of their year-end activities tying up. I know they mentioned there were some committee positions, committee chair positions still open that they were hoping to fill before the fall. There was discussion on how to, you know, draw in new members for the school year moving on. There was reflection a little bit on the eighth-grade Hershey trip and what sorts of feedback they could get moving forward from the parents of those who just recently went. And they were already discussing dates for open house and back-to-school nights for the fall. That just made me realize how, you know, as parents, we are always looking forward, and Dr. Trabowski is always looking forward to a new year, even though we haven't even finished this one. Again, I want to thank them for allowing us to be there, and I really liked the opportunity, the push to have us go, and I hope we can continue to do that next year.
Thank you much. Ms. Jackson?
Myself and Ms. Stats attended the Robo Raiders Award Ceremony. It was lots of fun, lots of humor, so congratulations and job well done. And myself, and when I showed up, Mr. Davis was there. We also attended the Woodford HSA, and I love Woodford. It's where my kids went, and it was like going home again, so it was very heartwarming. And the, the parents there, mostly moms, and Mr., Mr. Kerrigan, so, but they're, they're a great team. They really are compassionate as well and excited about giving their fourth graders a send.
Thank you all so much for engaging with our HSA's. It's important work. It's appreciated.
And I'll add in, we were at the senior awards, and so impressive how many seniors and the amount of money of tuition that they were given as, as awards. I think there were, there was a, there was a particular point, I think it was Air Force? I think there was two?
West Point.
West Point. How rare it is to have two from the same school, to think they have to be nominated by a congressman or something to that effect, and the fact that we had two female West Point attendees, and he joked about how, yes, even though they're female, they have to learn how to box and do all the fun stuff that everyone else has to do there. But yeah, it was very exciting and super proud of all, all the individuals there at that event. And that was, I think, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Stats, was anybody else? I think you guys were there. It was, it was great. All right. Any other comments from board members? All right, seeing none, we'll close board comment. We will take a motion to move into executive session. Who knows how long that'll last. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from portioning that meeting, which the public body discusses certain matters which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7 of the Act, as all by the Board of Education, in the town of Hillsborough, the county of Somerset, the state of Jersey as follows. The matter to be discussed are the superintendent evaluation, and the matters to be discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. We will not be taking any action. We will be closing the meeting from executive session, so from a public perspective, the meeting ends as soon as people take a motion and say aye. So can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.